Okay, are we ready? All right, we're going to go ahead and call meeting to order. Um, roll call.
Ben Keel.
Michelle Adams.
Good morning.
Yep, Bill. Denise Shaw.
William Corleone.
All right, and due to the weather, Pastor Paul was not able to make it, so we are going to just go ahead and go with the Pledgeable Agenda.
Pledgeable.
Pledgeable to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get an approval to the agenda?
Can we add one thing in new business first?
What do you got?
Uh, I just would like to discuss moving, let me do a little more form.
Back to the beginning?
Back to the end. It's already at the beginning, but yeah, I just wanted to talk about it.
Okay. No, but you didn't.
And then, yeah.
Also, I think maybe we should move E here about the credit cards.
We're not on the consent agenda yet. Or do you want to take that out?
Yeah, the main question too is, at this point, can we move stuff off the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Yeah.
Or do we have to wait? Because if we prove the general way it is, then we have to, right.
Well, you can, you can still discuss it under the consent agenda.
Anyway, I just thought we'd move over on the public works department. We have number three.
Under public works, it'd be number two.
Uh, number two is there, but there's three.
Okay. So what you guys, what do you think, Ben? I mean, because you guys can still discuss it.
What are, what are we talking about?
Yeah, but we can't, we can't do anything about it.
Okay, what are we, what are we talking about first?
They want to remove, uh, let's see, item E, credit card policy. Under the consent.
We have to do that, that's.
Well, we'll still do it, but the only thing is, I want to go over what the limits are.
That's different. That's, that's not the same thing. That's many of our.
Because of that fiasco we had with those roadkill out there on County Road 12, they got paid off so fast that we couldn't do anything about it. Did you get them to come out and redo that or whatever it took to take? We wouldn't have paid them ahead of time or right away. We would have probably been able to get them to come out and fix that up.
Okay, let's take it out, move it to new business. Um, under 11, new business, item C, credit card. Is that what you were talking about, Kirby too?
Wouldn't Kirby C already be open forum?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then E would be credit card.
D.
Where do you have D?
D. All right. Anything else under? So, do we now have an approval to the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have any comments to come? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Consent agenda. Any discussion?
Uh, the one question I had was with, so with L, which is the resolution approving the mayor appointments for the year. I see that it's in the packet because it's an open meeting with all three of you at the, what was it?
That's okay.
Sorry. It looks like an L with a dot. But yeah, the management coordinating meeting.
Yep.
Since it's already an open meeting, could that, could that just be added that all council members are on that?
No.
It can't be just a.
Because that would be a council meeting then if.
It wouldn't be a council meeting with three members?
No, because that's a tie for one. This was discussed before. I mean, we can, any council members can go, but then it is perceived as another council meeting. So why would we have a council meeting to have a first, a management coordinating meeting to go ahead to?
I was just, yeah, that was my question because I was curious. Because since this is already three, I didn't know if that.
You can still come.
You, you can come, you just sit there and listen.
You can listen, you just can't participate.
And that, that was one of the reasons why the legal team had also before had expressed only having two members on there versus three. So that's kind of where you, where you come into an issue with having three there. Because then, yes, it has, every one of them has to be publicized and made open to the public and so.
Which they already are.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that was just my question. I didn't know if it was an actual meeting or if it, if it counts a meeting or if it was a, whatever.
No, and if you go in, the meeting minutes will always be in the packet. That's right. It's done beforehand. And no, um, no decisions can be made by anybody that's in that meeting. Anything is done would be moved to council meetings.
Okay. Deliverance two is, there's just a quick bit that I saw about the closing on July 5th because that's on the consent agenda as well. As, what was the full part behind that since they're closed Thursday?
Because July 4th is a Thursday and considering July 5th then comes in, it's a Friday. It's only four hours and nobody really comes in, so. And when they do take that time off, they take it off using their PTO or vacation. Yep? Yep.
That was my question.
Okay. Good questions. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, I have one. Um, other than consent agenda two, we went over the performance review of Deb, who, City Corp Treasurer, it was her six month review. Um, that was done by myself, Tom, and Lloyd. Um, that's usually the process too. That's a part of that committee. And then we went along to the council. And as you can see, Deb went above and beyond everything that is expected of her. So it is our recommendation then to increase her wages from $29 an hour to $30 an hour. So that's it. Um, then I need an approval to the consent agenda. Unless there's any questions on that.
I'm going to make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe I have to abstain because I'm being part of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. Do I? So I'm part of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, I'm treasurer there. So, I mean, it's granted the liquor, like, the one day liquor license.
Is that a personal financial interest? Do you, are you volunteering?
Uh, no, I'm part of the board. I volunteer with them, but I mean.
If you don't have a personal financial interest.
Okay, no, I don't have a personal one, but, okay, then I will, yes.
All right. Uh, so any open forum? Wright County. Are you a new officer of town?
Yeah. Nothing really important for the city. I'm just here to let you guys know that Deputy McQuillan was moved out of the city. Um, he is now an open car on overnights. So you guys will be getting a new deputy from 6 P to 2 A for six days of the, of our nine day work week. We don't know who it's going to be yet, but it will be somebody, um, will be plugged into the schedule shortly. Um, in the meantime, it's being covered with some of our open shifts, which are sometimes some of our younger guys, which are really gun hole. So we'll see a lot more traffic enforcement, a lot more go-getters out there with it. So it's a good thing to have that. Um, and we'll kind of mend the new blood when it gets in here so that they're working on the community policing as you guys want.
I just have a question on that. Why is it like every six months we get a new officer?
It kind of has to do with seniority in our shift bits. Um, depending on how you bid and retirements and people moving, promotions, a spot opens up, next person in line to go to that next shift would be entitled to go to that shift, um, usually. Um, the city of Montrose was very fortunate, Deb Jay down here for a whole year last year. Um, and he did a fantastic job going here. Um, and I was sad to see him leave the city. Um, but he'll still be around, he's an open car, and this is the area that he likes to work. So you'll still see him just from 10 P to 6 A unfortunately.
So you're going to go again to Montrose or go to Monterey?
Depends. It depends. Jay actually wanted to work here, but he wanted the different houses. He wanted the overnight houses.
Who wants that?
Young men are awesome.
Oh, God, no.
I would prefer to be on overnights, but it is what it is.
Right.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
All right, city council. Let's start.
Well, let's see, we had one, two, three, four Wright County Commission Board meetings. I met with Tracy Heisler, who's the Planning and Zoning Commissioner for the city of Northfield. Chamber of Commerce meeting, Finance Committee, attended the two days of the OMC Leadership Conference, and then Management Coordinating Committee meeting. Just to kind of summarize Wright County, I had the pleasure of being there when our own Kevin Tripple was promoted to Sergeant. Uh, that was, that was a good thing, got new deputies who weren't in. Um, there are some things in terms of the Justice Center. Looks like there's a potential for the building project to be under budget by about $1.3 million. So you don't know how those things go. They talked about it now, but we'll see how it all flushes out. They're looking for some people, they're looking for county IT Director, the one we had left. They did verify that the Justice Center had a contingency at a balance of $1.8 million and 22% of the cost of the budget was already paid out. The project is at 35% of the schedule. So they're slightly behind and will catch up when the building's totally enclosed. Other than that, made some contacts with Charlie Burrow and Michael Potter regarding the Wright County Economic Development Partnership, meeting up in Otsego on Friday. So, that's it.
Council meeting, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. Um, we didn't have a Montrose Day Celebration meeting yesterday just due to the weather. Um, and then Fire Department, so.
All right, I was at, went to the firemen's dinner, which is always a joy to see. Kevin presents all the awards to his fellow widemen and women. Um, staff meetings, Park and Rec, and the Management Coordinating Committee meeting.
ADA meeting, council meeting, management court meeting.
And that's the council meeting, the Finance Committee, and the newly elected officials training. And, uh, yeah, I went to the firemen's dinner too, and that was awesome, Brian Redd, by the way. Good job, I recapped it.
You guys, Tom, you went to that conference too, right?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah.
How did it go? Good?
I thought it was good. It was pretty awesome though.
Good. All right. Kevin?
Just the activity report, all again. Other than what Deb's going to present, I'll generate your thing for me.
Okay. Oh, I'm Park and Rec because Matt's not here tonight. Um.
Do you want me to do the general?
Yep. Yep.
So knowing by the notes that Kevin gave me, so Kevin, interject if I see anything wrong. Um, the Montrose Fire Department is asking to purchase a generator that is 10,000 watts and 50 amps. It's a wheel generator that runs off of gasoline. The new generator is about the size of a snowboard. It would replace the old military surplus generator from the 1970s or 1980s that the Fire Department currently uses and is about the size of a pickup truck. The older generator has been unreliable and upkeep expensive. Um, it also requires a lot of storage space, space that the fire station does not have. And, um, they want to, that they said it, Kevin said that a gasoline engine is easier to maintain and also more reliable than diesel filled engines, sorry about that. The generator would be used in the event of a power outage to provide the essential power items such as lights, heat, open the garage doors, run the computers, and et cetera. The community center and the fire station are combined standby shelter for emergency management. And over the last three years, the fire station has been set up for emergency management approximately four or five times due to gas outages, power outages, and severe weather. The proposed generator is designed to provide power for the community center and fire station for 12 to 24 hours. Beyond this amount of time, a larger generator would be contracted, all in accordance with the type of the emergency. And finally, the purchase of the generator has been in the capital improvement plan, was originally planned to be a natural gas standing generator placed outside a fenced area. The approximate cost of this type of generator was $15,000 to $20,000. The approximate cost of the proposed generator that they would like to purchase is $5,000. And the $5,000 includes the generator and then any equipment needed to set up the fire station so that it can hook up easily and be used immediately. The funding would come from the Emergency Management Fund, and there is money available in that fund for the purchase of the generator. How was that?
Is there any discussion on that?
The generator in this size will heat and power everything in these buildings as long as the gas isn't out.
Okay. Yep.
Where's it coming from?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
I have too many electricians on the department.
No. Come on, hell.
All right, is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve a new generator purchase for the Fire Department to use.
I'll second that.
Uh, Tom.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
And Ben.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Park and Rec. What did we do? Um, they gave a little bit of an update on the preserve. Uh, skate day was a success. There was a variety of participants. We had Happily Ever After, which was Elsa, Anna, and Olaf. Um, we discussed pickleball. We are going to be looking at Olaf on our tennis court, and Wayne's looking at, based on that, to repaint the tennis court and then also incorporate pickleball into it. And then we'll be working with community to get some teams out here for that. Um, Matt gave an over review on our annual report. We talked about our 2019 to-do list. Uh, let's see. The egg hunts, moving ahead with that. Game night, which is coming up here along with the community meal. We're still looking for ice skates or hockey skates. That's about it. Deb, what do you have?
Um, the December 19th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we started off by talking about trying to identify locations for semi-truck trailers to park. And we have identified two locations, and Miles is looking at that. Uh, then the other big thing that we talked about that the whole meeting took up was the park dedication. And then we represented that in January, what it, uh, what works, what amendments they came up with for that. And then the second thing.
So you can't speak in the mic, so it's kind of hard to hear over here. Will you look, will you check? Please.
Okay, it's on.
Um, and then the other thing that you see under the planning and zoning is we do have to change the February 20th meeting. The reason being, uh, the city planner doesn't want to delve into anything else right now that we're working on PAC Smart because if we would do something on the 20th, he wants to keep going with it. And so he wouldn't be able to present it and then have it the next meeting because the next meeting would be devoted to PAC Smart and the housing development, the preserve housing development. So, and the other reason we're doing this is because we had established a public hearing for that last planning and zoning meeting that got canceled because of the weather. And then since that point, PAC Smart wanted to renegotiate some items. And so they're working on that right now. And I have to post again for a public hearing. And in order to meet the number of days that it has to be published, we can't meet until March 13th. So that's why we're changing the date and the time.
So the, will they have two meetings next month then?
They've only had one meeting.
Just the one?
Yes. Yep.
See how close as we can for that, so I ask.
Any questions?
So the meeting will be March 13th then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Wayne.
First, we have to establish a.
Why do you establish a date?
Well, you. I know Mirano and I talked about six o'clock before the March 11th, city council meeting.
For the review for Wayne?
Yes.
That's just, the three of us would do that.
Oh, just the coordinating, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to do it at six o'clock then, on the 11th?
Does that work for you, Ben?
Yeah, it works for me.
Yep.
Does that give you enough time for, that might not be, that might not be enough time if we do that and have to be down here for the meeting?
Unless we just do it at three o'clock. Does that work?
Do you, are you able to be in time?
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
Let's do it at three thirty then.
Okay. Because we did originally have it, just so you guys know, we did originally have it scheduled, but at that time, we didn't realize it. We forgot that line was on vacation.
Yes.
So.
Okay, reschedule. So March 11th at three thirty. Okay, thank you. And I'll get you the paperwork.
Okay. Okay, Wayne.
What did you want me to talk about?
Your part-time seasonal flowers?
Oh. Yeah, we, we're looking towards two part-time summer kids this summer from Owen Grass and Trumon Meats. Anything else that comes up in between, even flower beds, just like they've always done?
Were we going to change some of their requirements?
Yeah.
So it would be just 16 years of age?
Well, we can't do that.
Insurance.
I checked into the insurance.
Oh, it's got to be 18?
It's got to be 18.
Okay. But they still wouldn't have to be a college student.
Right, 18 and a half with driver's license. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention and just make sure everybody was okay with that.
18, Owen Grass.
We would have loved to go on to 16 on insurance, but let us do that, so.
Okay, good thing you checked that, though.
Yeah. So this basically, Wayne will start looking, probably, he'll probably put it add in in March. No. Anytime now. We usually look at getting kids when they come home.
Well, in the middle of March, I was thinking.
Getting, yeah, yeah, because that's when the kids start getting out of school and so on and so forth, so. Um, and our normal pay start is 12? Is that right?
It's 12.
12. Okay.
And the Management Coordinating Committee thought that that was a reasonable hourly wage, so we'll advertise for that.
Any discussion on that? No?
No.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for you to advertise for that or do we just do that? I don't.
I think you need a motion, yeah.
I think we need a motion because of that.
Okay, I'll make a motion for, to allow Wayne to go ahead and advertise for the part-time seasonal summer employees.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Lloyd.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Ben.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes five to zero. Uh, order of business now, discussion of allowing residents to have chickens, which is Kyle Hoffman, you want to come on up? You have to state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Kyle Hoffman, and I live at 804 St. Villaln. Let's go.
Just go ahead, yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the chicken ordinance. Um, I know that we did just talk about this in July, and so I'm grateful to think about, uh, talk about it again. Um, I did reach out to the community via the Facebook community page. Um, there's a lot of people stating different ideas on what they prefer. And I did gather a little list of just the cons, just so we could go through that and see if we could reach an agreement on if we'll be able to pass this ordinance. Um, one of the concerns is how many chickens are we allowed to have? And cities have either from four to eight chickens. I do think of having six chickens as an adequate amount. Um, this gives you like six eggs a day, which is quite a bit of eggs. Also gives you the ability to have three chickens right away. And then, because chickens will stop laying eggs around three to six years. So when that production goes down, you can then get it over three chickens, and that way that compensates that. And you can also get, um, three egg laying birds and three meat birds. Um, that way you're already having eggs and meat, something different. Uh, I'm not really going to do the meat birds, but going off of the meat birds, I would say that we would also have to not allow the slaughter of chickens in our yards, just because it wouldn't be okay for people's or neighbors to see that. Um, also the fact that we shouldn't allow roosters just because they're a lot, they're allowed the majority of the day besides at night, and they're not needed for the hens to lay eggs. I did reach out to Kyle Donlinard, I don't know if you can say his last name.
Oh, the Lions resident? Yes. Yeah.
And then I reached out to another person named Emily Nader, and they both said if someone does hatch an egg and it turns out to be a rooster, that they'd be glad they'd take the rooster. So we do have the options of being able to get rid of the roosters in town if we need. Um, another thing is, uh, the sale of eggs. Most towns do not allow selling eggs, and I agree to that. That also limits having the need to have more hens, just because if you can't make a profit, why would you want more? Six eggs is really a lot. Um, another big issue is feces. So if, when you clean your coop, you should have to put it into a sealed container that nothing can get into. Another good thing would be having a location somewhere within the city that we could then discard the contents of the container once it is full. It is a good compost material, so.
To move the yard.
Right. Another good thing to have would be a chicken coop and a chicken run. It would be nice to, uh, the chicken coop is just a good place for the chickens to go at night, um, for sure they wouldn't be able to know it's there. And that's just what they do when the sun goes on, they need to go somewhere to sleep. Uh, having the chicken run is also good because if we do allow, um, open, uh, good environment, uh, free range chickens, if they're out in the yard, they can then go into the chicken run if they see, um, if a flight, like a flight predator, so a hawk or something coming at it, it does have somewhere to hide. Uh, it would be nice to have free range chickens just because it would produce better eggs and, um, the chickens wouldn't be as prone to diseases. I, I did hand you guys a idea for a permit application, which both of you guys received. And so on that permit, I did make it so you have to go to the next door neighbors and get their signature and okay for the chickens. There's also a box on there that makes it so it requires a chicken run and fence, so they're now free range. So that gives your neighbors option to say no to having free range birds. Um, also going back to having the, the coop and chicken run, you can also install a predator skirt, which that means if a predator does come to try to get the chickens, they'll start digging underneath the coop and you reach the predator skirt, which means they could go in further to help maintain getting the predators out. Um, this goes into the last reason of why, I mean, what we would have to do, the, how would you regulate tapping chickens? And I don't really know, you guys regulate this all the time right now, but that seems like a strong issue. Having the neighbors sign off on the permit, I think is a good start to open up the, just being able to speak to the neighbors about chickens. And if there is an issue with like having a smelling coop or something, hopefully the neighbors would come to you first because you'll be living right next to it for the whole time, being in there all the time and don't smell it. I don't, I don't know. Uh. There are like optional fines that you could do if we don't follow the ordinance rules. Like give us a set mandate to fix whatever rule we're breaking and then give us a fine if we do, give a fine, I don't know, three times. I think that gives a good reason to revoke that permit application since obviously we're not very good at taking care of the chickens, so we shouldn't have that permit. Also, maybe to help out with it if someone keeps calling multiple times and they're having false information on the chickens, maybe they could also receive a fine too. Oh, and all, it'd be awesome to have chickens just because they look pretty historic and they're amazing to watch and learn more about and get to enjoy their eggs. and learn more about and get to enjoy their eggs.
Have you discussed any of this with your neighbors at all?
Um, I discussed it with one side, but not really the other side, I don't talk to them. So, I don't know if they would even sign off on it.
Okay.
Can we add a word in some of that, that we discontinued this a few years ago, we have this problem?
We don't allow chickens.
We don't allow chickens.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't, we don't allow livestock. You know, the other thing that I look at this is, I mean, chickens are livestock. Are you requiring them to have then a, um, like feedlot permit, you know, and have them be certified? Because I know like my father has hog barns, I grew up in a hog farm, I've been around pigs for thirty-seven years. I cannot legally go in his hog barns and feed his pigs because I'm not certified. Even though I can do just as good a job as some other people can. Or if not better than people that have certi-certificates. I mean, are there regulations like that out there with chickens?
I have only looked at Watertown and Monticello ordinances and they did not specify anything like that.
I mean, does, does the state?
Not that I'm aware of.
And one other thing, you said you're going to have chickens to fillet and then you're going to have some meat chickens, which would be roosters?
Uh, no, so it's an actual meat bird. They don't lay eggs, they're only for meat.
And so, you're...
They're, they're...
They're not roosters?
They're not roosters. You get, you get brooder hens that, that just, they're, they're designed just to be a meat bird. They, they grow...
Go fast and get a point or two in the morning.
Correct. Yeah.
Well, I said it, we had definitely planned before.
Yeah, hens that lay eggs do not taste like the chickens that we eat.
I don't, I don't think you want to have any roosters, tell me that.
No. I agree with that.
I'm not so sure we want to.
I have a rooster. Can you go tell us about those roosters? Across from me is township, so...
Right in the park, so we have to...
Well, you know...
Or unless it's like, he's township. What was it?
Is he in the city?
No, he's, he's...
Yeah, okay, but he can't still do another question.
We're having multiple issues trying to, uh, enforce the codes we already have in the books. And now it seems like we're going to be jumping off into another whole realm of code enforcement issues. We have people that don't show their sidewalks. So, I mean, will it be the same people that don't show their sidewalks that don't take care of their chicken coops? You know, I, I don't know.
That's my concern as a staff person is regulating this. I mean, that's, that's going to be a lot. And I, I can just go over with you again what I found out from a former city attorney when we looked at this in June. Um, he had me get in touch with, and please interject, Wayne, if you want, if you have time.
Sure.
He had me get in touch with the city clerk for the city of Elko New Market, um, because he helped them when they, when they did their chicken ordinance. And what happened there is a resident came and asked to have chickens. And, um, it went back and forth between planning the city council for months and months. I think Matt said it took years to get it finally adopted. And what happened is when you have an ordinance where you allow chickens, the ordinance has to have so many regulations are required, and so it's cost prohibitive to, for a person to, to do it. So, the person that came and asked the city of Elko New Market to pass it never even had chickens because it was cost prohibitive to do that. And then the other thing that, um, Matt had brought up and our city planner at the time had brought up, they work in many different cities and a huge issue they said that you have with this is then you have lots of, you have coyotes coming into town, killing people's cats and dogs, you have mink, you have, um, skunks, you have raccoons, you have all kinds of issues. So, I'm just giving you that side of it from what I researched when I, when this was brought up before, this is what I found out, so... Not saying yes or no, I'm just giving you what I found out. And for something for you to think about.
Which, having the reason of it going to be too expensive for us to have a coop, be a reason not to have a pass?
It's a great question. I mean, if, if the ordinance is...
Well, I'm just giving you the information of what happened in their city, so...
Us three were here in June and the reason Kyle's here is because he has the council.
Yeah.
So, he is kind of looking for input from the guys, I see your thoughts.
I think it would be good for the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at it. I definitely think it's something worth looking into. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but it's, it's worth trying. I mean, but yeah, there probably will be provisions on it that would make it so it is, you know, expensive to get yourself ready to do this and then people won't want to do it. So, I don't know, but I think it's worth them looking at.
Who's going to enforce the ordinance this?
It's a great question.
How do, how do your, uh, who does like lead to it now?
Who does our ordinance enforcement? Deb does.
So, do you go out and look at every yard for the weeds as it is?
No, I go mainly on, um, reports from council members, from public works department, from other residents and that's when I go check off properties.
So, what would be the difference from that and chickens? Can we just go off reports and then you go out and look and see if you find something?
I think what, what we're talking about is the time part of it.
See, I have workload.
Um, Montrose is a big city and, and trying to keep up with the code enforcement is...
So, would that be like an overtime thing?
No.
No.
No, okay.
I'm just saying to me, it's just something that they should, to take a look at and especially if we're talking about possibly, I see on here adding staff later on at some point. It's a way to divvy out some things, but I'm not saying it's a for sure. I mean, I want to know all the backs behind it, but...
Well, the proper procedure would be to have the planning and zoning bring something to the council, right?
Yep. And remember, they won't be meeting now until March.
Okay.
So, and that would probably actually be, um, a public hearing in regards to our preserves. So, then it wouldn't be on an agenda maybe till April or May.
Okay.
Just to let you know at that time, so...
Yeah.
And I could talk to Miles, maybe we could add it to the agenda. I do think the preserve is going to take up quite a bit of time, but...
Right, right.
So, how many people do you feel are wanting chickens?
It's so...
Thirty-eight.
Pardon?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Because, uh, a resident, I don't know if you're on that community page, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you on that one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, are you on the politics page? Montrose Polk?
No.
So, one of our residents put a little poll out there, I'm sure you've probably even seen it today, I guess, but thirty-eight people were for it.
Well, just because it's for it doesn't mean that they, they want chickens, right?
Well, no, all of them said they were okay, didn't care, then there was, um, I'm pulling up very quick.
You know, out of the thirty-eight, when I start looking at what the costs of having chickens are...
They may only be saying it because they're good friends with this person.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean...
That's not necessarily get the ones that want really new...
Yeah, but then you have to look at two and you've got the, the feeder on there too. Because I know growing up, neighbors across the road had laying hens and brooders. Um, I mean, they had their feed and steel drums because of not wanting to have any rodents, you know, the mice and the rats.
Yeah, no water, no seal is a main thing, like it is not going to be cheap to get started.
No, you know, and I, I guess particularly I'm not a big fan of the free range because, you know, like you were talking about the, uh, the manure from now, how are you collecting the manure if they're free range?
So, with a flock of six, um, the average per day is the size of an average dog in a household, around forty pounds. So, and since it's spread out throughout all the yard in little pellets, they will dry and go into the grass as fertilizer.
Yep.
So, really the only manure that we're worried about is most manure in the coop.
Okay. Um, but yeah, then I, I look at, I guess when I walk around my yard, I don't have any dogs and I still end up stepping in dog crap. I don't want to be stepping.
What if we made it so they had to be in a fenced area?
Oh, and the city...
Oh, they are not, they have a city, they have to be. Yes.
They have to be fenced because...
So, would it be free range thing just your backyard?
Yeah, my dogs are always... Those fences aren't that high. You need a special fence around a brooder house.
Six feet.
Twelve feet by, maybe ten.
They fly five.
See, that's where I think you talk about the cost prohibitive because you're talking about a lot of fence.
Fence, yeah.
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 So, it's going to be two hundred square feet. Okay. It's not going to be two hundred square feet.
So, you're, did I hear you correctly when you said you need a fence that's over five feet tall?
Uh, well, that's what the average hen flies, so they could go more.
So, we're, uh, Montrose is going to wind up looking like Gulag, right? Stala Pratim kind of thing.
I mean, that's what manure already looks like. You know, that's six foot privacy fence.
Everybody has six foot fences now, but...
Why that would be a bad thing?
I see, I, there are no fences up on that, so...
But if you don't have a fence, then it would be required that they have to stay in the chicken run?
Well, I, I still say...
I guess I'd start with it at planning and zoning and...
So, is that something that I need to bring to them? Or how is that?
Yes.
Yeah, you'd kind of have to do this little speech again.
Great.
You did great, so it's good. See, it wasn't that hard.
You might want to think about... Do I have dimensions?
Do what?
Pictures, diagrams, exams, examples for them to look at.
Of the coop itself or like how far away from a house or...
All the way up.
Okay.
The more info the better that they can do on it.
Yeah, because they don't want to do the info they want. If you want this, you have to present it, so...
I'll do that.
Yeah, you might want to consider being the chicken cop of the town too.
I mean, if that means it's passed and I don't have to do anything.
It's not a paid position.
If you're going to sell eggs, you've got to have a permit too.
What is?
We're not selling eggs.
No, no. We need some likes.
I do, do, do we agree though that, or do you agree that we don't want to have free range chickens? I don't think we want chickens running over, do we?
No.
I mean, that's, that's just, that alone is going to be a traffic issue.
Free range coyotes and foxes.
You've heard of that, they have that hutch with turkeys. They have a pack of like twenty turkeys, which is free range, running around the town, huh? Yeah.
I have that across the street from my house.
This is in town of Hutch, they stop Highway fifteen sometimes because they're just walking across the highway.
And that's why I just brought up if they already have that privacy fence, would it be okay to let them run in there instead of being stuffed with chickens running?
You know, I...
And that's like, well, sure, that's so concerned for me at the moment.
Free range chickens though?
And that's why I had to say that.
I do have to say, I mean, and I told you this already, the neighbor two doors down from me had like five chickens fenced in. I never saw him, never heard of him. The guy across the street from me has turkeys, roosters, everything else because he's township. He is not in city limits. So, I heard his roosters and his geese come trapping on my doorstep, but...
And there's three residents already that have chickens in town?
Yes.
And...
And they're not...
And nothing happens to them, so it's like, you know, people...
Well, that's...
That's not something you want to talk about, right? I mean, just because somebody's doing something against code, that's going to make it right, right? Pardon me?
You guys are not hearing about it. So, that's not going to be legal.
I, I do not know until recently that a mayor had a neighbor that had one of those. I don't know that of anybody who has chickens in town, nobody's reported to me.
Exactly, that's good to think.
You got to...
My bottom line is, is there, it is a violation of code.
Well, it is, but, but they're now having complaints and that's it.
So, now if you call the community page, they'll...
That's a good, that's a good point, it really is.
So, if you...
You can't say because nobody's complaining, it's still not wrong, right?
Oh, I, a hundred percent, I'm not going to have chickens if you guys deny this.
If nobody complains about me speeding through the neighborhood, I'm still not, I'm not going to speed through.
Oh, they complain about that though. You get that all the time.
Okay, so, um, the best planning and zoning meeting, you know, we'll, we'll recommend to move this to planning and zoning and then you just present again.
Okay, and then it comes back here?
And then, well, that's up to them. They'll be, they'll make a recommendation, yes or no, and they'll pretty much tell you that night.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, new business is discussion regarding a new city assessor position.
Our city assessor, assessor, um, Duane Swenson let us know last week that he's retiring from his assessment contract. Um, he has completed the assessment work for the year two thousand eighteen and the information will be at the Wright County Assessor's Open Book Meeting on April fourth from three to six at the Wright County Government Center, the Assessor's Office. The reason why we're putting this, I put this on the agenda is you can either have Wright County Assessor's Office do your assessment work or you can contract again. I did have, um, someone that contacted me that is interested in the position. She must have known that he was going to retire. So, what city staff will do is we'll, um, research what it would cost to have Wright County do it as opposed to our contract and then we'll bring that back to you to consider, see what you want to do. It is, some of it is covered, uh, the new home building permits, there's a twenty-five dollar fee on there for his work because that's what he charges the city, so it's a wash that way. But, um, just something for you to think about and to know that he is going to be done and we will need to do something.
Back in September when I checked on that, I talked to the county assessor. At that point in time, we have fourteen hundred and sixty-three parcels and they were charged us twelve dollars a parcel. So, that comes out of about seventeen-five versus, uh, uh, Mr. Swenson's twenty thousand dollars we're paying him every year. So, I think, you know, if it's still twelve dollars a parcel, I, I don't know why we went to, uh, uh, Dewey Swenson to begin with, but...
That's way before us.
Yeah, before my time, so I don't know what the driving factor was there, but why we don't just use the county.
He, when he worked for Wright County, he was assigned to Montrose and he did their assessments on the side after he retired. He, he continued to do it after he retired, so, uh, what, now what did you say? He...
The, the county assessor told me that, this was back in September now, so I haven't re-looked at the numbers again, but at that point in time, they were charging twelve dollars per parcel for an assessment. And, uh, at that time, we had fourteen hundred and sixty-three parcels.
The county was?
That was the county number.
Yeah, because he charges ten dollars and thirty cents a parcel.
So, he was...
Well, then how come, how come we're paying him twenty thousand dollars a year?
Um, because you had your new construction parcels, but we collect for that. And so, that is reimbursed through, those are at twenty-two fifty and we collect twenty-five dollars in the building permit for those.
Okay.
So, here is, you can hand that down to them and look at, but this was the bill from April. I need to get that back, but... So, staff will look into that and, and do a comparison of what it would cost to have the county.
Yeah, I guess, I'd like to see the file numbers in the function, just to see what we're... I mean, is there some benefit not using the county? I mean, according to the county assessor, he says sometimes people will charge a few pennies less than what they're charging.
I think the thing, the reason, um, when he said was nice about having him is he knew our community.
Yeah, because he was originally a county employee.
So, he knew our communities, so that makes a big difference when you bring someone that doesn't know the community as well. It takes a little bit longer and it takes more time, so...
Well, we have to start that squirrel again as a new person.
Yeah.
Right. So, pretty much it just depends on financial.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
And you'll have that to us in March?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Deb.
All right, um, discussion for our part-time administrative assistant, that was discussed too at the, um, management coordinating. So, do everyone want to go ahead on that one?
Yeah, we, I presented it to the management coordinating, uh, committee because we are in need of someone to help with code enforcement. When I say help with code enforcement, I don't mean going out. I will still, still do that, I'll still evaluate the properties myself or Mr. McCormick. Um, we both work on that together and we both take pictures. I'm talking about someone that, um, can pick up the slack as far as taking pictures and, and I have letters that are already prepared, like a canned letter. They just have to put the information in for you. And then also developing a schedule and keeping track of that follow-up schedule so that we can make sure that they're doing what they said they would at a certain time. I would still deal with residents, I meet with them one-on-one at their home or I talk to them over the phone. Um, sometimes it's, a resident can't afford the cost to remediate what I'm asking them to. So, then we make, I'll extend the time or I'll, I'll work with them on a schedule so that they can get that done. So, we're looking at, at that. Um, I went through it with other staff and we're looking at someone that would just be twenty-four hours a week. And the schedule that we picked was Monday through Thursday from nine AM to two PM. And the schedule that we picked was Monday through Thursday from nine AM to two PM, because that way, uh, they could collect the mail when they come in, open the mail, distribute the mail. And they also would be here to cover, uh, the lunch hour for Jessica when she's gone to lunch. Uh, Wendy and I do that, but it's a little difficult. You've been to see how it's a little difficult from our office, and the reality is, is that we're, we're very busy from, we need until the end of the day, Wendy and I, so it'd be nice to have that person to cover that. Uh, we talked about, depending on experience, fourteen to sixteen dollars an hour. There is money in the budget to cover the cost to have an administrative assistant. Uh, they would not be unioned because they're part-time, and they would not have benefits. It would be a nice job for, let's say, like a stay-at-home mom that wants to come in after the kids go to school and be home by the time they come home. Be a good job for someone like that. Uh, so it's, it's just some more administrative, um, assistant duties, like letters and opening the utility bills and adding those up. We have, uh, it's something that would be acceptable to the auditors too, because then you have, uh, what they call segregation of duties. So right now, Wendy opens up the utility payments, she adds them up, she hands them to me, I add them up again and check to make sure that we match, and then she gives them to Jessica, and Jessica puts them in the system, and once again, we check to make sure they match. So that's what they like, is the segregation of duties, you have different people. So this person would do what Wendy does, give it to me, and then I would give it to Jessica. So, um, I don't know, I don't know what else to say about it. It's just, it would be very helpful for us to have someone like this, and I just want you to talk about it, and if you want me to move forward with it, I will type up some type of a job description and bring it to you for you to look at and to get your approval to advertise if you are okay with something like this. I, I don't know what Wayne has anymore to interject, but, um, they would also be trained to help, um, I, I'm really big into the cross-training in City Hall, and I'm really trying to learn how to do every aspect of every job. Um, they would be trained how to do the licensing and that type of thing too, to back up when Jessica's not in the office.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
Um, I just wanna say that, uh, for some of you that aren't aware, we did, it used to have, it used to be, you know, our two admins, and then we had Chris and Sheila back in the day, so there was always two people. Um, and now with the, uh, I mean, I know you guys agree, but with the possibility of preserves out here, Forest Creek Development, Whitetail Ranch Development, co-enforcement's a big deal, and Debbie's very, I mean, just keep it on top of it, but, um, it's a lot of work, so that's one of the main reasons why she gave her message to everybody.
And, you know, we talked about it as staff, um, you, you bring someone in like this, and if you continue to grow, like you have the preserve coming in, and we have another developer that wants to do another development, then you bring someone in, you've trained them, and so if you decide to go to a full-time position, then you've got a person that's already trained. So it's a, I don't know, I think it's a win-win all around.
I agree.
Alright, um, do you need a motion or just a consensus for us? We'll just go with the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
And you're motioning for me to continue?
Yeah, to go ahead and put a job description together.
Yeah, write out a job description.
Uh, Deb, how would you advertise it? Just locally or?
We would do it in the League of Minnesota Cities. We would do it locally. We would do it, um, on our website. I'm trying to, where do we all do it? When we did like the?
We do it through email.
Okay, so we would do, for sure, League of Minnesota Cities has a really nice site for that. Um, yes, we would do the local newspaper. We would do it on our website. I don't know. Do you have any other suggestions or?
I was just curious. The process you took.
In any other way that I can find, I will make sure that, I think we would do it in several newspapers, like the Herald Journal, 'cause people would tell, you're getting the Delano Herald Journal. We would do the Drummer.
And the Journal Post, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be great to get somebody local and maybe a short trip to work, for sure, you know, has kids to take care of or whatever, you know.
Do they? And they tell you?
Yep, okay. They're pretty equal with Wright County.
Yeah, so we will, I will do that. I will get everything. Okay, so we made the motion. I'm sorry.
Lloyd did. I second my turn.
Okay.
Alright, Kirby.
Aye.
I'll go, aye, Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, open forum, Kirby.
I just like to explore the possibility of moving open forum from right after when we do the consent agenda to after new business. I just, I feel that if there's bigger things that happen with the citizens, there could be more questions that come up later on, and people might wanna ask them versus just blurring them out. They can fill out the paperwork and put it for the open forum, and then if there's other stuff that may have to be looked up at the time, Wendy or whoever may be able to look it up before it gets brought to us at the end of the meeting, and then we can talk about it with more information. That's just would be my thought, is moving open forum to the end instead of right away at the beginning. But that's just me.
You know, that one time that open forum used to really be a headache, and it's used both, both good and bad, but anyway, in a few years back, it was almost used for the residents, not to have a say on anything. Like, they, they complain about it, and they say, okay, we'll move it to the end. Well, they move it to the end, and somebody gets up to about an item, that's three items to go, and that's already seconded and made a motion on, and then the mayor come, well, you can't talk about that, that's already done. And if you get it up in the middle, and this is what I've seen, if you get it up in the front, well, we do not do that again. You can't talk about that, we're not doing that right now. I think really and truly what I'd like to see is do away with open forums. When I'm talking, we discuss one topic, then ask the public if there's any opinions.
That's kinda what we do now. I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, they, they do have the opportunity when we're discussing something to come up to the podium and speak, speak their piece already. So, I mean, if.
So there's no use to have an open forum?
Well, but if you have, but if you have something specific, if you wanna talk about, like, if, if Debbie has something specific he wants to talk about, he fills out an open forum, brings it up at the beginning, hands it to the mayor, and then he's on there for that specific topic.
And I think at that, they should be allowed to speak first, so that if there is a long meeting, they don't have to sit through all of that. So, but to your point, I mean, I personally, like, we're having a chicken discussion, so Kyle came up on top, but.
Yeah, if someone else wanted to add something, they can, yeah.
Or, or any topic. If somebody had some, a question up, up and cracked, and they say, hey, I have a question, you know, feel free to, feel free to talk whenever, so.
Just, I, I mean, I, I mean, I guess, I, I like your, the, the idea of having, having the open forum at the end, because if we are getting to the type of topics that are on the agenda first, and get them hammered out and done and over with, and then the open forum's at the end. You know, get the, get the stuff that's done, that we need to get done, done.
Right, but I think that if a, a resident is coming to address something on open forum, that they took the time to come out, I think it's important to discuss that as well in the beginning, so that they don't have to stay through the whole overview.
For the people.
Either way, I know either way, so.
For a person that's got, uh, a certain thing that don't begin with the agenda or whatever, that's a good idea to have it first, 'cause they come and then afterwards, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think I like that idea, 'cause then the rest of the agenda, I mean, like you said, you come up, grab the microphone and talk about any topic and whole agenda at any kind of time, so.
So keep the open forum at the beginning?
Yeah, I, I would.
I would do it.
Everybody, oh, get it done?
I, I mean, I, like I said, I, I liked it at the end, but, I mean, if it's not, uh, everybody else doing.
Do we wanna take a vote on it?
But, but it seems like it's, they wouldn't move, so, I mean, it's, I don't think we need to vote, it's gonna stay.
Okay. Alright, then let's go to the credit card issue. I think that was all. You guys have concerns?
No, my question was answered before, and I'd asked, Deb, if the only thing that needed to change was that it was adding that if you do accidentally charge something, you have to pay it back, right? That was the only change, it was the highlighted area that it is, and so I'll just answer my question.
Okay, and my question was, uh, how many of the credit cards, is there, am I done?
But that, yep, yep, that's under spending authority though.
And the reason why I brought this up is because of those manhole covers out there on County Road twelve.
They weren't paid with credit card.
When I went out to talk to Wayne about that, and you said, well, you can't get them back out, 'cause you, you already paid them.
No, that, they weren't paid with credit card, they were paid by check.
Yeah.
They didn't have to come back, the county was going sixty.
But it still isn't fixed.
That's the county all year.
But that's up to the county. That's the county who said that, that's not us.
We called the county and told them, they came back and added more, made a worse. Now, they weren't paid with credit card, they were paid with a check.
Credit card is usually only like an emergency kind of issues, pretty much, and that is what Deb has given authority, as does Wayne. They're really dealing too. Everything else comes to us under, the accounts payable and is paid by check.
Fire two policy, that's pending authority.
Right, okay. I think you have the highest pending authority.
I can say emergency management.
Right, yep, yep, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's what I brought up, because, uh, a lot of people complain about those manhole covers on County Road twelve.
Yeah, I don't reach out to the, to the county, 'cause it is.
Shake them up a little bit.
But it's the County Road, they left all of that.
When does that, when does that county board meeting?
That's the meeting that, um, Tom.
I'll get it, I'll bring that up to those people.
On the Tuesday, tomorrow morning.
It's snowing right now, but I will make a motion to approve the credit card policy change. I'll second that.
Alright, uh, I will vote aye, Ben.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Before we go on to the meetings, I forgot to give the city attorney some time under planning zoning. She has to mention, she has to, she has a little update on the Trump Highway twenty-five. I'm sorry.
I do, uh, can, is this on? Yeah, okay. So I spoke with Dan Wilson, um, the gentleman who is negotiating our appraisals on the TH twenty-five highway project, and it sounds like he thinks he's gonna have a few of them secured at the end of the week. Um, there are two that, for various reasons, will not be secured in negotiation and will have to move towards condemnation. And then I think that leaves about five of them that are up in the air at this point. Um, because of the scheduling of this project, as it relates to the, um, state highway aid that, uh, is going into the project, there are certain deadlines that need to be met with respect to project scheduling and moving forward. Because of that, um, we are going to be forced to file condemnation actions against any properties that aren't, um, negotiated with a settlement by the end of next Friday. That doesn't mean that those properties couldn't reach a settlement later on during the condemnation process, but that's really our last chance because of the deadlines that apply to file that condemnation. So, um, anything that doesn't have an agreement resolved by that will get filed on condemnation, um, and I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Okay. Dave, do you guys have any questions on that?
No.
Alright, then we'll move ahead to upcoming meetings. This Park and Rec meeting is Monday, March fourth, five-thirty at the City Hall Conference Room. Uh, the next management coordinating meeting is Tuesday, March fifth, three-thirty at the, in the conference room as well. City Council meeting is March eleventh at seven o'clock. Planning and zoning is scheduled to March thirteenth. Um, the next community meal is, let me double-check that date, um, third Thursday, which is, one, two, three, the twenty-first, February twenty-first, from five to seven, um, is the next community meal, as well as game night. I think that's it for upcoming meetings. Acknowledgements, I have a couple of, um, Matt Menard, Mike Markerton, Joe Montoma, and Willie Bowerschmidt for receiving the Top Responder Awards, um, at the Fireman's Relief Dinner. Jessica.
Bankly.
What's that?
Big Engley.
Bankly, uh, Josh Menard and Terry Van Gavie for completing their training, which is a two-year process, correct? And then Alan Mortensen for receiving the Red Line Award. And, um, just everybody from the Firemen's Relief Association who put that dinner together. Um, they always have great success, good turnout for their son-in-law, so.
You also grabbed Joe Doyle for the firefighter.
That's right, the big one, Joe Doyle, 'cause I didn't see him. Um, his dad actually accepted the award for him, which he is a Maple Plain fighter, right?
He's, uh, Assistant Chief of Maple Plain.
Okay, so, yeah. Alright, anybody else?
Good job to the Public Works guys, they're getting the streets cleaned.
Yeah, they're doing that.
And thank you to you for posting that on Facebook when they're getting out there to clean them, so the people are just out.
When are they gonna pull out?
When are they doing?
It's good to get that out there right away, so I like that.
We have to do a reminder once again, when we talk about clearing, um, people need to clear their sidewalks. Um, there's a lot of sidewalks, and there are van boxes, 'cause they are covered in snow, and more snow's coming, and a lot of the kids are out stuck, standing in the middle of the streets, 'cause they can't get on the sidewalk, and it's a safety issue, so.
Could I have, Wayne, I wanna ask you something. Do you guys complain about, uh, my street with that, uh, delivery truck or that parcel truck down the corner, that box truck?
I see that they have a little.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, I noticed today, you know, he, they seem to flumble around in front of his truck.
It sticks out in the road, it's up.
Yeah, now I noticed there's a huge puddle of snow he put in the middle of the road, and I guess he shovelled around his driveway or something and just, you know.
So we don't need people putting snow in roads.
Yeah, I didn't know if you knew about that or not. I could talk to him.
Since we're talking about snow as well, just kind of reminder to citizens to take care of shoveling out fire hydrants. That's a huge help to us. Um, would you rather have us shoveling out a hydrant or creating a fire out in your house? That's unthinkable, so. There's one hydrant every five hundred feet approximately, so it covers about five or six houses, so if everybody takes a turn, you only gotta shovel one.
A lot of them are pretty well covered, so we're gonna get out, first chance we get to.
Yeah, I have an issue too, mine's covered.
And I just wanted, I just wanted to make one acknowledgement. Uh, the auditors are here this week for the annual audit, and I just wanted to mention that, as you know, I've worked in the city of Delano, Winstead, and Big Lake, and typically, they're here for three to five days, and, uh, they were here all day today, and they said that and only, of the four, only two are coming back tomorrow, and they think that they will probably be finishing up tomorrow. And it's because Wendy, your deputy clerk, is so organized. She had everything so organized and ready to go for them that, um, they were able to just come in and rock and roll and get through stuff, so, um, I wanna acknowledge her for that, because she really, well, you said when you came to the finance, you noticed too, that she's just very organized. So I just wanted to thank her for that and acknowledge her for that.
I just wanna give one more friendly reminder, um, March fifteenth, Mantra's Day celebration is having a fish fry.
So are you coming up?
Yeah.
Alright, anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.